This is Wichita Public Schools Board of Education meeting for April the 20th, 2020. The Wichita Public Schools will be the district of choice in our region where all students and staff are empowered to dream, believe, and achieve. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? Would you please rise and repeat the pledge of allegiance with me? Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. My name is Cheryl Logan and I am the president of the Wichita Public Schools Board of Education. Today, we are conducting a regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education and official business will be conducted during this meeting. The COVID-19 and the Governor's Shelter-in-Place order mandate that, as with the last meeting of the Board of Education, today's meeting will be conducted in an unusual manner. No members of the public are present at this meeting. Three board members, Julie Hedrick, Ernestine Crable, and Ron Rosales, are attending the meeting remotely. The other four members, including myself, are attending the meeting in person. Members of the public are not here because of the Governor's orders for all citizens in Kansas to shelter in place and that no more than 10 people can gather in one place. It is important to the Wichita Public Schools Board of Education that in spite of the fact that the public is not present, we conduct this meeting in compliance with the Kansas Open Meetings Act. In this regard, this meeting is available to be viewed by the public in the following ways. The board meeting will be shared via live WPS-TV on Cox Cable, Channel 20, on the district's By searching "WPS-TV" on the livestream app for phone, Roku, and Apple TV, the following conclusion of today's meeting, this meeting will be available on our Wichita Public Schools' web channel. It will also be rebroadcast on the WPS-TV cable channel 20 and online at WPS-TV 10 times per week. The rebroadcast schedule is available on our website at www.usd259.org/boe. This information was made known to the public by the public notices by the clerk of the board published on April the 7th and April the 15th. The agenda for this meeting was published on April the 16th, 2020, at www.usd259.org/boe. Under the BOE Meeting's Agendas and Minutes tab, the news media also received the main agenda and a portfolio containing the appendices. Revisions made after that publication but prior to this meeting will be reflected in the online agenda which is being displayed at this meeting. The agenda for this meeting is available to be viewed and will be available after the meeting to be viewed at www.usd259.org/boe, under the BOE Meetings and Agendas tab. At this board meeting, all board members, district staff, and presenters will identify themselves by name and position before they speak. This will assist the public in following the meeting. Motions will be read before they are voted on, and each BOE member will announce how they are voting. The outcome of the vote will be announced after the vote has been taken. This meeting is taking place at the School Service Center located at 3850 North Hydraulic Street, Wichita, Kansas. Board of Education meetings will be conducted at the School Service Center until the shelter-in-place orders are no longer in effect. This includes the May 4th and the May 18th meetings, which will be held at the School Service Center at 12:00 noon. The public communication item that allows members of the public to speak to the board at meetings has been removed from the agenda. Public communications will not be placed back on the agenda until the shelter-in-place order is no longer in effect. The reason for this is because members of the public cannot attend meetings in person because the shelter-in-place and the order that public meetings be no more than 10 people. There will be an executive session at the end of this meeting. Again, I want to reassure you that the board intends to conduct its meetings during the time shelter-in-place orders are in effect in compliance with the Kansas Open Meetings Act and in a way that protects the safety and health of the public, district staff, and our board members. Thank you. We will now begin the agenda of our meeting. Mike?
This is Mike Willamy, clerk of the board. Under Reports None Submitted, Education, Continuous Learning Plan Update. On March 30th, 2020, the board approved the Wichita Public Schools waiver application packet, including its continuous learning plan for submission to the Kansas State Department of Education. The district has implemented the district-wide continuous learning plan to provide all students access to evidence-based resources, guidance, and feedback to instruction during the closing of schools. Today's presentation is an update on the continuous learning plan. This presentation is for the board's information.
Thank you and welcome. Alicia?
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to update you on several educational items that have emerged from our pandemic response. And board members, those of you who are on the call, I do not have a PowerPoint presentation. I'm just going to have some opportunities to kind of engage you guys in some information and then at any point, you may ask any questions that you may have around this work. So I'm going to focus on three specific areas in my report today. Our continuous learning plan, the work that is occurring to bring this plan to life, and finally, our graduating seniors. First, our continuous learning plan. In hindsight, I believe that we were fortunate that Governor Kelly made the bold statement at the beginning of the crisis in Kansas when she closed physical school buildings through the end of the year. Though the consequence of her decision was a challenge, we could not have imagined having certainty in our timeframe that helped us to quickly develop a robust plan for continuous learning for the remainder of the year. Kansas has been held up by many as a national leader in continuous learning planning, and I could not be more proud of the administrators, educators, and support staff in our district who have poured their hearts and minds into the work we are now going to emerge in with our students. I want to give special thanks to Terry Moses, our Division Director of Safety and Environmental Services, and Wendy Johnson, our Division Director of Strategic Communications, for leading our district's response. And to all of the leaders in the district who have been meeting daily since before spring break to do everything possible to support our students and our staff. At this point in our continuous learning journey, our teachers are actively engaged in continuous learning opportunities with our students. They are calling students and families regularly. They are using Google Classrooms to post learning materials and classroom lectures for student engagement. And they are using Microsoft Teams to hold classroom chat sessions with students. I will tell you that it has been really fun to hear about these classrooms and the chats that they're having. Students in grades pre-K through 8 have the opportunity to access online curriculum programs as well as printed packets that I'll share with you a little bit more about here in a moment. Through pre-K through 8th grade, the students' grades are frozen at their third-quarter marks. At high schools, they still have the opportunity to bring in work to their teachers, not necessarily bring them in physically, but to bring them in and share with their teachers their work so that the teachers give them the opportunity to improve their grades due to the implications of graduation rankings, GPA, post-secondary requirements, and scholarship eligibility. If you ever wonder whether the contact of a relationship between a student and his or her teacher is important, you can see it play out every day on social media and in news stories about the lengths in which teachers will go to maintain the relationships and the contact with their students. As dark and difficult as some of the days have been since the pandemic hit, spirits are uplifted with examples of special bonds that exist between their students and their teachers. Teachers and building administrators are going to great lengths to reach out to every family to engage in continuous learning opportunities. And at this point, I'd like to reach out again to families. For those families and students who have not heard from their teachers, they should be reaching out to their school office because that means we do not have a current contact information for you. I'm really excited to announce to you this morning, this is new to our board members, we have launched a new continuous learning resource. It's called WPS Learn Together, and it's all about amplifying the continuous learning in the areas of art, music, PE, and science. There will be conducting really cool activities in this area so that students can do them at home. Our focus is on pre-K through 8th grade students. Our very own teachers in these curricular areas have been in the studio with our WPS-TV producers, recording lessons that will be broadcast on social media, on our WPS Learn Together website, and on our TV channel. New videos will be released Monday through Wednesday each week at 10:00 a.m. on social media. Each day, we will have a curricular theme, with Monday being music, Tuesday is PE, and Wednesday will be art. Later this month, we will also begin featuring lessons on Thursdays. The videos will be available on demand on our website, www.usd259.org/wpslearn-together, and we will also broadcast them regularly on WPS-TV. As a reminder to our community, our TV station can be viewed live on our website, on Cox Cable, Channel 20, or by searching the WPS-TV on the livestream app for your phone, Roku, and Apple TV. I will look forward to seeing the creativity of our teachers as we continue to seek ways to bring our students robust, continuous learning opportunities through the spring. I mentioned that I have three things to share with you. The second item I want to touch base on are some key successes in supporting continuous learning. Each of you have a copy of one of our continuous learning packets at your seat. Board members participating on the phone, we will be mailing a copy to each one of you. We mailed out more than 36,000 Week 2 packets to every pre-K through 8th grade student in our district. Last week, families received this combination with Week 3 and Week 4 packets if they opted in. To date, that opt-in list represents more than 21,000 students, and we continue to add to it as families call us and decide that they would like to receive the mailed in packet. The materials are also available on our WPS Learn website. Currently, we have a community partner who is printing and mailing these large orders out for us. But I want to take this opportunity to recognize Christina Lopez and the staff in our Print Production Center. As we started the continuous learning work, the Print Center crew did an extraordinary job on our very first packets. They continue today with regular production of special education and newcomer packets as well as some of our fine arts packets that will be mailed out to families soon. I also want to salute the team in Curriculum and Instruction led by Dr. Irving, Dr. Geeson, and Kristy O'Toole, who stepped up to the continuous learning challenge to create the packets that we are sending out to our students. As you can imagine, this has been no small task to create resources like this within one week of learning that school would look different for the rest of the school year. The team also created the WPS Parent Guide and worked with Strategic Communications to develop the WPS Learn site where parents can find online packets, links to curricular resources, and information about the great opportunities like digital citizenship that you'll hear about next. Digital literacy and learning has been on hyperdrive since we've started this continuous learning plan, and I couldn't be more pleased to have Rob Dixon as our chief technology leader right now, along with his talented group of instructional technology specialists who have been delivering virtual training nonstop. In a two-week period, we offered 91 live virtual trainings for staff in the areas such as Microsoft Teams, Lexia, Dreambox, iReady, Second Step, music, art, and more. We have more than 16,000 participants in these sessions. That is a lot of training. And in addition to our amazing CIO, I want to thank the instructional technology staff who has been responsible for conducting these online trainings. We also added 15 new on-demand videos last week to our professional learning portal, and we've had more than 1,600 views so far. We're even using virtual learning to continue our weekly peer mentoring work for the first and second-year teachers. In addition to these professional learning opportunities, we also recognize that as our students become global citizens, parents also need help to help their students in the digital world. So we're going to be rolling out some really cool things to support our parents, and I'm really excited that starting next week, the week of April the 27th, we will be partnering with Common Sense Media and offering sessions for the parents, focusing on digital parenting, digital citizenship, and connecting with teachers on Microsoft Teams for remote learning. We've had so many questions from our parents wanting to know how they could learn more in order to help their children learn remotely, and this will be an awesome opportunity. These sessions will emphasize a balanced approach to remote learning which celebrates the positive aspects of digital life while teaching students to avoid its potential issues. As a parent myself, I struggle with how to help my child strive in the digital world that is so different than when I grew up, and I'm excited also to get on and to learn about how I can help my daughter as a parent as well. Finally, in terms of operational support, I want to share some quick updates about the student nutrition program. We have a lot of heroes in our school district, but I think I would put the biggest superhero capes on the dedicated workers in the nutrition services that day in and day out are on-site at 6:00 a.m. every Monday through Thursday preparing meals to feed our community's children. Since Wednesday, March 25th, we have served more than 201,000 meals. Whether it has been cold, windy, or a beautiful spring day, the principals, assistant principals, security guards, cafeteria staff, and district employees are all at our 18 service locations across Wichita, having a positive attitude, encouraging, and committed to giving healthy meals to our students. It is impossible to say to you enough that these are dedicated heroes within our school district, and they are to be celebrated. I also want to give two other student nutrition shout-outs to Mr. Bradley Drier and our friends at the Credit Union of America. Bradley was one of the first community partners to reach out to say, "How can his company help?" Credit Union of America stepped up with a $25,000 gift to help support our work to feed children. I am truly touched by their generosity. We had some fun last week with Credit Union. We had a socially distancing check presentation, and you'll see that video sometime this afternoon. It was kind of cool to kind of watch from the window and then step out and then step back in. It was kind of cool. So to all of our friends at the Credit Union of America, I'd like to say thank you. I also want to give a shout-out to the Kansas Food Bank and to all of the partners who are helping to distribute food backpacks to children who are food insecure on the weekends. Our very own Terrell Davis is helping to lead this work in conjunction with real men, real heroes, faith community leaders from 25 churches, Newman University, First Student, Rise Up for Youth, and the Wichita Police Department. To all of you, please accept my sincerest thanks. And finally, just as a culmination of our educational career is our graduation. And the culmination of my educational report to you today is graduation. The loss of traditional senior year festivities such as proms, graduation, has been most heartbreaking in the aspect of the COVID-19 crisis. This past weekend was prom, and so many young people put their beautiful gowns and tuxes and they dolled up their hair and makeup and celebrated through photographs which they were on all of our social media channels. And so they looked really beautiful, and we were excited to be able to view those beautiful dresses. But it was really disappointing that they were not able to have their prom. And I've been talking to many of our students, including Super SAC leaders, last week at our virtual meeting. I've heard three things. They want something to happen in May. The students say that they do want something later, but they want it to be before the end of July, and they want it in-person, and they want the celebration to be with their caps and gowns on. And so those are some of the things that the students that we visited with have been telling us that they want. And while we cannot replicate the mass gatherings in May, we know that we won't be able to do that in May, but we've got several awesome things that will be happening to help the class of 2020 celebrate in unique style. First, the May celebration. KWCH stepped forward and asked how they could help, and we have worked with them to create senior celebrations for each of our high schools that will broadcast in May. They will include messages from the principal, student remarks, and names and images of every one of our graduates. We'll have more details soon about the night that each school's celebration will air and when the celebrations will rebroadcast on WPS-TV and available on social media. This is really a special opportunity that we will be providing to our seniors for a May celebration, and we are so grateful to KWCH for their willingness to bring forward this great opportunity. Second, the in-person celebration before the end of July. We are currently working on plans to conduct in-person celebrations for our seniors so that they can indeed earn, put on those caps and gowns, and walk across the stage. Plans are not finalized yet, but we are leaning on the guidance of our students and our high school principals, and we look forward to sharing more details with you and our graduating seniors very soon. The important thing to know is, if public gathering standards allow, we will, I will repeat, we will have in-person celebrations so our seniors can mark this rite of passage. And third, a world premiere tonight, we're going to celebrate our 2020 seniors. You will be able to hear an awesome, awesome tune and be able to commensurate the memory of your 2020 years starting tonight. So tonight, here in Wichita, we will be having a moment at 8:20. So mark your calendars tonight at 8:20, 8 o'clock, 8:20 PM. We will again be celebrating by having all of our stadiums within our school district. The lights will be turned on. And what we would like for all of you all to do, if you're in our community, even if you don't have a senior but you live in our community, we'd like for you to either turn on your porch lights at 8:20, or either take your flashlights and use those flashlights and get them on your deck or even on your porch and leave them on for 20 minutes in honor of our seniors that will be graduating in 2020. So please, 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 take the opportunity to engage with us and recognize seniors in your neighborhood. We also have something special, and we'd like for you to tune in to WPS social media tonight at 8:20 to see the music video to a song called "Rise." It is co-written by Northeast Magnet Principal Matt Kreisman and teacher Toby Tyner and performed by their third band, their band called The Griffins. And it's featuring images from across the district. So you can also, while you're out on your deck and out on your porch, you can tune in on your phone or on the Facebook pages and be able to also see images and songs that were created by our own folks here within the district. It's going to be an awesome experience. I had a little sneak peek of it today, and man, I can tell you, it is amazing and it is a tear-jerker. So make sure you tune in tonight at 8:20. It'll be all of our show's social media today, so you'll be able to kind of find those links and tune in there. There has been a lot going on since our last meeting and a lot for us to be proud of, and I'd like to thank you for the time for me to provide this lengthy update, and I'm here now to stand to answer any questions that you all may have.
Mr. Reiser?
Stand. Reiser. Dr. Thompson, okay, on the WPS Learn Together, you said Monday will be music, Tuesday PE, Wednesday art, and Thursday, you're going to eventually get to what?
We have not decided yet, but it will be science. It will be science. So on Thursdays, we will begin to have science STEM activities on that evening.
Thank you.
Any questions, any other questions for Dr. Thompson? I just want to say, it has been amazing for me to watch school being reinvented in about a week and a half. And it's not just thrown together, it is extremely well-done. The packets are amazing, and if parents go through them, for two weeks, you get like a little workbook that's, gosh, a lot of pages long with all kinds of different activities that you can do at home with your students in every area. The opening up of our computer systems and programs to parents so that they can use them at home, being as visible as we are, if parents want to find us, they can find us very easily on our WPS website. And, you know, watching those food programs go out and as many students as we're serving safely, they pop the trunk, they put the food in the trunk, and they move out. And now to hear about all the graduation activities. So school isn't finished in Wichita, and we won't let it be until the end of May. So keep working, parents, and we appreciate everything that the parents have done because this is an extra burden on them too. But it's really been, gosh, kind of overwhelming as a board member to watch everything that's happened as it's been rolling out. It's been wonderful. Great. Thanks for the report. We'll keep watching. Next item, Mike.
This is Mike Willamy, clerk of the board. Under Finance, Budget Report. Administration will update the board on the budget. This item provides an opportunity for the board's information and discussion.
This is Susan Willis, Chief Financial Officer.
And Rob Dixon, Chief Information Officer.
And we're just getting our PowerPoint loaded up. Good afternoon, President Logan, Superintendent Thompson, Vice President Hedrick, and members of the board. Good afternoon, President Logan, Superintendent Thompson, Vice President Hedrick, and members of the board. When Dr. Thompson said it feels like it's been a long time, it feels even longer since I've been in front of the board to give an update on the fiscal year '21 budget planning process. And it's really only been five weeks. So to say a lot has happened in five weeks is certainly an understatement. But this afternoon, I'd like to start a little bit of where we left off in March with a first discussion of if there's been any changes to our revenue and fixed cost estimates from that March meeting. And at this point, the answer is no. We are still anticipating new revenues based on our enrollment from two years ago and a 1% decrease in our overall weightings, leading to about $9.3 million of new funding for next year. Our fixed costs related to things like transportation, utilities, and those expenditures, we're still at this point at nine and a half million. Those might modify particularly related to fuel costs a little bit. But at this point, we're still anticipating a negative position of about $218,000 based on those early estimates in March. Again, a lot has changed in the past five weeks and we do want to kind of cover what has changed and what has not changed in our budget planning process. So certainly, the focus of our current year budget has shifted to continuous learning. And I will say, I will echo Dr. Thompson's accolades to the many, many departments that have really risen to the occasion, particularly Nutrition Services. Nutrition Services is one of those areas where we are watching the budgets pretty closely. They are doing phenomenal work in serving meals per week. And right now, again, about an average of 65,000 meals per week are going out. But the normal amount of meals per week that we serve is closer to 225,000. So that does have a revenue impact in Nutrition Services. We will bring back to the board some of those estimates, but right now it's a little too early. We're kind of right in the mix of what's happening and we want to make sure we bring you good, solid numbers. So that will be forthcoming. What we also know is changing is that the district will receive some one-time stimulus funds. But what we don't know yet is the exact amount and we don't know the restrictions on those one-time funds. So we're waiting again to see what that looks like for the district and how that incorporates into our fiscal year '21 planning process. We do know that potential budget needs are going to change in fiscal year '21. We just don't know exactly what that looks like yet. What will our summer programming look like? As we return in the fall, what will that look like? Is there a chance that something happens related to the pandemic would raise its head again? We just don't know those things. So we really need a couple of what-if scenario plannings related to fiscal year '21 and we've started to make those plans. So that's kind of what's been changing in the background related to budget planning. I can tell you what hasn't changed is that the state is making all of its state aid payments in full, on time. We've had no interruption of revenues. Critical operational expenditures are occurring without interruption as well. And it is a credit to our new Chief Information Officer and his team. We were live conducting business from home within 24 hours of the shutdown notice. Paychecks went out on time, without issue, very, very smoothly. So we've been very pleased. It's also a testament to the board's commitment to robust integrated systems that we are able to perform all of these functions basically with employees from home and the district's continued effort to automate functions. We are doing most of our work through paperless transactions at this point, online approvals. And certainly, it's been remarkable to see that transition in such a very short period of time. That shortfall related to the March estimates, we have continued to work on our targeted budget plans. So we are continuing to look at reducing positions through natural attrition, particularly in the elementary teaching staff because of the reductions in enrollment over the past few years. So that was an item we introduced to you in March. That work continues, nothing's changed there. We are also reviewing all of our programs and budgets for potential savings. However, that is now through the lens of what does that mean in a kind of a different pandemic-related budget planning process. So again, most of those budget planning things are going on, but they've kind of had a slight twist is that we have to also plan for changes to education related to pandemic planning issues. But what we wanted to focus on today was two very specific targeted action items that we presented last month. And the first one is the ability to spread technology costs over several budget years through a lease option. The second is kind of looking at that virtual programming piece and how, given our efforts through this last five weeks to transition to online learning, what does this mean for our future related to online and virtual offerings? So I think those two, at a very high level, we're going to talk about today. And I'm going to throw it over to Mr. Dixon to kind of lead you through that whole plan process related to technology.
Thanks, Susan. Rob Dixon here, Chief Information Officer. You know, I have this slide up here because I think whenever you talk about technology and how it's introduced to our students and to our society, things have changed. Like, one of the things I want to talk to you about is the why. And so, when you look at society today, what has happened is how we communicate, how we converse, is in a different style than what you and I grew up with. I grew up in a small town. When my mom told me to leave the house and not come back until the lights turned on, I kind of fended for myself. And now we've digitized that collaboration that I had with my friends, that my kids have. And having three daughters grow up and I have now one junior, her experience is even different than my oldest daughter. And my oldest daughter's college age, she's in Omaha still, she goes to Metro Community College. And so whenever I look at even that, it's not that change has happened, but the acceleration of change has happened as well. And so, if you think about even this, it's very, very relevant today, but it's even at an accelerated pace due to what we're dealing with with this pandemic. Well, I can tell you, last week, we trained over 5,000 participants in virtual learning opportunities using Teams, just getting some exposure to them to those different styles of how we deliver content. And they engaged with their students in those ways too. And so, I could throw out a ton of statistics to show how much that's impacted. But what I would say is our students are already ready with that. They download apps to their phones, they communicate via that. This really being in shelter right now hasn't changed the social aspects of how they communicate because they've always been communicating this way. And so, next slide. So when you look at this graph, and I constantly update this every year, these are where our students come in at. And I talked about the differences between my three daughters. But you think about the differences in how our kids are exposed to these technologies depended upon when they were born and what technologies were out there. It's so exponential and we're getting to such a personalized aspect of technology. When you look at how our kids are exposed to different types of apps, different types of modalities, and the way that they collaborate, which is incredible. Like, sometimes I'll watch some of my kids' videos or some of their friends' videos that they create. It's not that they're just sitting there consuming, they're creating content at a level that I've never seen before. There's more hours on YouTube in a single second than there are in an entire day uploaded to YouTube. And so, all of that is created by our kids, our families, our community. And so, when you think about those types of things, we need to make sure that we focus on digital literacy and citizenship. And so, we're offering, starting next week in a partnership with Common Sense Media, digital parenting. My youngest daughter Bailey is actually going to help me next week in this session, understanding the scaffolding of how I limited her in her growth as a child, growing up, and what that looked like. She's going to be very honest with the community on how she felt. But there's an importance there to understand that you can't just limit and say no to kids. It's how do you expose them to that atmosphere in a scaffolded manner? And so, you can do that, but it requires parents to have a knowledge of that technology environment. And if you look at our workforce today, we have a very large workforce. We've got, I can go ahead and go through each of those. We've got probably the largest single workforce that we've ever had from an age gap standpoint and from a digital literacy skills and citizenship standpoint. So when you think about computing and you think about early stages, when you remember those old CRT monitors and those desktop machines and they took up literally 75% of your desk, and now we're very much in a mobile environment. Whenever I saw President Logan, she got out of her car earlier, I was in a video conference call on my phone in my Jeep, and I could not have done that 10 years ago with literally 25 people on that video call. And I think we've constantly progressed. And some of the things that you're going to look at when we select devices is called modern computing. And whenever I think about modern computing, it's a computing where I have access to that information anywhere. And it's also a device that I give different types of input. Just like kids today, they communicate with images, they communicate with videos, memes, they communicate with emojis. All of that expresses some form of emotion, of value. And we need to understand and teach our kids what that looks like in the realm of appropriateness. And so, when you look at that aspect and you look at things in that manner, they're constantly learning those things in a virtual manner. No one gives them a form and says, hey, I want you to go through this 10-page sheet on Snapchat and learn how to Snapchat. Those kids learned that in an intrinsic way. And there's a huge intrinsic value to virtual learning. Having been exposed to starting virtual programs in the past, I find huge value in virtual learning because it takes kids to an intrinsic value of learning, that lifelong learning model. And I think in the future, we have some opportunities to look at. Whenever you look at our traditional classrooms today, you know, very much, when you look at the use of space and time, we still hold the same structures that we've had before, right? It's a seven to eight period day, we have blocks, we don't have blocks, we have rows, we don't have rows, we have groups. When you look at ways to offer virtual opportunities, two things come into mind. One, I love the exposure that kids get to virtual learning because the likelihood of them transitioning to post-secondary education, whatever that is, it doesn't matter if it's into a job or into a college or a junior college, there's going to be some online learning that happens there. And if we're going to prepare our kids, we've got to understand what that virtual learning concept looks like. And also, from our teacher's standpoint, we've got to progress them across that clock, right? And help them to understand what the delivery of content looks like in a virtual setting. Because it's not the same pieces of time. We're looking at that today in a remote learning, right? So it doesn't make sense for a teacher to sit there and lecture for 50 minutes in a remote learning session because that's not the best way of delivering content in a remote learning session. And so, I want us to understand that we may not go back to an old normal, we may create our own new normal. And so, the importance of a virtual school offering there is two things. One, instructional technology can only get that teacher to a certain extent, right? It's through process, right? I can get to process, but if I want to get to context of a classroom, I need to get to a teacher that does it every day. And a virtual school teacher can do that. And so, by creating some resources where our virtual school teachers are offering professional development opportunities to our traditional teachers so that they can help them blend that atmosphere, we'll get, and this is ASCD's model of Awareness Skill Development Implementation Institutionization. Those are depths of knowledge. And if we want to traverse teachers to that depth of knowledge, it's important to get context to the content that they're delivering. And so, we can do that. We measured devices. At AMAC, we had about six different vendors come and bring devices. Whenever you think about what that modern computing looks like, we brought six different themes of devices and I'll show those themes here shortly. But around 41 parents, staff members, students ran through and measured those devices. And so, it was great to have that type of environment for them to come through and give a value to, this is my experience. Because it's no longer, it's not can that device do the job? It's what experience am I going to consume in that new content arena and what that looks like? And so, we had some, even as we look at esports in the future, we had some gaming machines there and understand what that looks like with some of our students. So we were able to do that. Go ahead. This next one, this is the managed choice. So the different themes that we delivered were Chromebooks, traditional laptop, a low-cost laptop, which is similar to a Chromebook, but it allows for that esports activity to happen. A non-traditional touch, an esports desktop, and then a small inform factor desktop, knowing that that's probably the smallest percentage leading into the environment that we need to have. And I have this graphic here that we drew up because it's really about providing the right supports to make this ecosystem happen very effectively. And so, I appreciate Dr. Thompson talking about Microsoft Teams. That's really kind of our collaboration and integration platform. And as we adopt systems that are virtual, provide virtual opportunities for our students, we're incredibly mindful about integrating those with that. So it's a true experience for a student and for a staff member. And so, our goal with this, as we roll out to districts or roll out to our schools, is to get every single school Common Sense Media certified, which means that they have to deliver digital citizenship within their classroom to the grade levels that are within that content area. And so, within Omaha, whenever I was there, we rolled it out in a similar fashion. And within four years, we had literally 100% of our schools were Common Sense Media certified and we got a district-wide Common Sense Media certification. And what that allows you to do is you've done due diligence in making sure that your teachers are, it's not something that's separate, it's a part of the lesson that's being delivered of, here's the appropriateness of how you search for content and understanding, is it fake news? Is this valid? I need to verify that. And so, all of those things are within the context of that lesson being delivered. So it's very much integrated. Go ahead. The timeline, and this is really probably an extremely flexible timeline. We've just purchased devices for elementary staff. And as we move forward, we'll start to do fourth and fifth grade in elementary. But you see another timetable for elementary and what that is, is filling in the gaps. So the model that we delivered is a 4th through 12 model for devices. And so, K through 3 would fill in with the existing devices at the high school level that were less than four years old. So then we would fill those in at K through 3 and that would provide those students access to technology in a way that we could still fund. There's a large grant process that's in Phase 4 that we're looking at that's specific for middle schools. And so, that's why you see middle schools being at the end of this timeline because that grant process that will open up next month will provide some opportunities that are transformative for our middle schools to look at STEM activities. And so, this initial phase would cover Phase 1 and Phase 2. Go ahead, next. The framework, I've been a part of future-ready leadership for about four years now as a thought leader. This framework is amazing because it covers all the buckets that are needed to make sure that the devices, the infrastructure, the professional development, the curriculum, all of those things tied together to give a seamless experience for a student. And whenever you think about blended learning, you think about collaborative- And whenever you think about blended learning, you think about collaborative leadership, you look at the vision, you look at, uh, data privacy and security, which is huge piece of this, uh, we have to keep in mind what all of those gears look like and not take any more out of one bucket than we do another, so that we make sure that we're, we're providing the right supports for the system. And so when you look at even modern computing, uh, what we're providing teachers is a modern computing device. This is, this is a e- exactly a Surface Pro that I have here right now. Um, what's different about it than a traditional laptop is typically if I were carrying that laptop, it would be hard for me to walk around a classroom and compute, right? Deliver content, input content. With this device, I can unhinge the keyboard, I can still compute, I, I have the, the ability to, uh, have a strap on here, uh, traverse across the classroom. I can, I can give input via text, text to, uh, uh, speech to text. I can digital ink and give context to content and wirelessly display in every single classroom for a student. So now I'm no longer hinged to that corner of a desk. I can now walk around a room and facilitate learning. And so that, those modalities of classroom management are trying to make sure that we're doing what's right in the context of, uh, an immersive digital environment where students have access to devices. It's important to make sure that kids understand what the use of space and time look like and that teacher needs to have the, the availability via technology to do that. And so this modern, that's why you see things such as an iPad is popular today because it's a modern computing device. We're moving away as a society from a traditional laptop to a modern computing infrastructure. And so, uh, we're also looking at, and you can, you can breeze through these, how we work collaboratively. So probably years ago and, and somewhat in this district, a year ago, we worked on documents on premise, you know, very much I had to email it back and forth and it was a point in time. Well, now because everything's in a cloud environment and is protected in that cloud environment, I can collaborate on that document with 50, 100 people all at one time. And so the curation of content, no matter what type of document it is, is something that's real-time and can happen anywhere in real-time. And so you're seeing that happen today in our remote learning, uh, environment. And that's also secure. So, uh, one of the things I, I do want the board to understand is just because we moved it from on-premise to in the cloud, we use techniques called information rights management and digital rights management to protect data, whether that be in email, whether that be in files, uh, even content within files. If I were to email out a document that had a, a credit card, uh, number in it, it would be stopped at, uh, exchange and not allowed to send out because it identifies the data within that file that's in the email. So I have that type of protection. I also have the protection of, of, uh, securing student data and understanding if there's social security number or anything else in that data, so it can't be shared outside of the tenant. So. And then all of those work all together in intelligent ways. And so, um, that's really all I have for this, as far as the why.
Okay, so kind of bringing this back full circle, um, we, as a district, obviously we have to balance, um, several things. So certainly we have to balance our ability to pay for certain pieces of academic needs and operational needs. We need to balance that against what's best for students. We need to balance that against our staff needs. So it, it does present some opportunities for us to maybe look at, um, options differently. And we had brought to the board back in March, um, an option to look at financing for technology, um, a little bit differently. And I'm gonna have, um, Dr. Willamy read, um, the next item in, um, for the board.
Resolution 2020-06, Determining the Advisibility of Financing the Acquisition, Installation, and Equipping of Technology Improvements by the Execution and Delivery of a Lease-Purchase Agreement. At the Board of Education meeting on February 24th, 2020, administration made a presentation on lease purchase financing and its potential application to support district initiatives. Lease purchase financing would allow the district to purchase personal property such as computers, copiers, and other equipment under an installment contract. Administration proposed an agreement with Piper Sandler and Company as the exclusive placement agent for possible lease purchase financing arrangements. At the February 24th meeting, the board approved an agreement with Piper Sandler and Company to act as the exclusive placement agent for possible lease purchase financing arrangements not to exceed $30 million. For its initial lease purchase agreement, the district seeks to place $10,835,000 for the lease of student and staff computer hardware under the district's technology rotation strategy. If today's agenda item is approved, Piper Sandler and Company would commence an RFP process to find competitive terms and rates for the leasing arrangement that would be brought back to the board for final approval within the next two months. Kansas statutes 10-1116B and statute 721149 give the district legal authority to authorize the improvements and the financing of the same through the execution and delivery of a lease purchase agreement. Today's agenda item provides for the adoption of Resolution 2020-06. As provided in Appendix 1A, Resolution 2020-06 states that, one, the district is hereby authorized to complete final plans and specifications and a contract for the acquisition, installation, and equipping of the improvements at an estimated cost of $10,835,000. Two, the district shall commence negotiations to enter into a lease purchase agreement, the lease, to provide financing for the improvements and cost of issuance related thereto, which lease shall contain such terms, conditions, and provisions as shall be acceptable to the governing body. Piper Sandler and Company, Leewood, Kansas, the municipal advisor, is hereby authorized to assist the district with taking actions necessary to find and enter into negotiations with a suitable leaser, the leaser. Three, in order to permit and expedite the acquisition, installation, and equipping of the improvements and realization of the public benefits to be derived from it, the district may expend lawfully available funds prior to execution and delivery of the lease to be reimbursed upon execution and delivery of the lease. Recommendation, it is recommended the board approve the adoption of Resolution 2020-06 entitled Determining the Advisibility of Financing the Acquisition, Installation, and Equipping of Technology Improvements by the Execution and Delivery of a Lease-Purchase Agreement of Unified School District Number 259, Sedgwick County, Kansas, and Wichita, and directing and authorizing the district's chief financial officer. The resolution is provided in Appendix 1A of this agenda, which is published online. The anticipated timeline for further actions under this lease are provided in Appendix 1B.
Okay, that's a whole lot of information and I'm going to basically come back and break that down a little bit. So, and I misspoke earlier was we brought it to you in February, not March. My, my, my months are now running together. So, uh, essentially what we were saying is there's a couple ways to purchase technology. We can, we can save for what we want because if we spent about $11 million on technology in a particular year, we wouldn't be able to pay for any of the software that we currently have. So we really can't afford to, in one budget year, expend that much for hardware. So similar to buying a car, we have needs now. We have, we have equity needs across the district related to how our technology is deployed and those certainly have become more apparent during this pandemic process as far as the, the need for the current technology and it to be deployed equitably across the district. So similar to when you, when you're looking at buying a car, you have immediate transportation needs. If you wait to save enough to buy a $40,000 car, you will be, be waiting quite a period of time to collect that much money. And in the meantime, you are without transportation. You have to use other means which aren't as, as beneficial to you as getting from A to B as quickly as possible in your own vehicle. So instead, you finance a car over a period of time that you can afford to make those payments month to month, but you have use of the car right now, right? From the minute you sign the loan paperwork. Similarly, we would be looking at a lease for technology that would operate similar to a loan and that we would make payments monthly over a period of time, probably in the three to four-year timeframe. And then we would own that equipment upon the completion of the lease. But we would get the, the immediate use of the equipment the minute we are able to purchase it day one, or at least whenever it would come in after we signed the paperwork. So that's the advantage of a lease for technology is you make those payments over a three to four-year period, but you are able to deploy that technology now for use in your schools. So that's why we're proposing this, this alternate financing arrangement to get this technology embedded faster than we would otherwise be able to do. And certainly as our environment has changed, I think that need has become more apparent. But this is not your last opportunity to review this, this, um, arrangement. So I have a timeline of a lease, the lease process, um, on screen. What we're asking the board today is to adopt the, the resolution that basically says we have an intent to enter into a lease. That isn't the actual lease. That's just the next step in the process. It says the board is supportive of the concept, we're ready for you to take the next step, go shop, and bring us back what you get as far as terms. What's the best interest rate? What's the term of the loan, the lease, that information? So we'll be doing a lot of things if, should the board, um, accept this recommendation today. And then hopefully in about a month, we would come back for a, a last opportunity for the board, um, to, to, to say, no, we just don't wanna do this right now, or yes, we think it's critical to how the district is gonna conduct business in the future with students and technology, we need to move forward. So this is an interim step, not a final step. There will be another opportunity to review this as a entire transaction. So the next question the board might have is can we really afford to make payments, um, month to month over the next three to four years, particularly in light of whatever, um, financial uncertainty might be coming down the pipeline? And that's a valid question. So what we did is we did some forecasting related to our capital outlay. And the very first column, column of numbers, it says projected 63020. That's where we believe we're going to end this fiscal year at. So we started with unencumbered cash of around 36 million. Um, we have projected revenues now of close to 40 million, projected expenditures of about 42 million. So we believe we're going to end in capital outlay at around $33 million. That's, that's where we're forecasting right now. Again, things can change. We'll bring some information back to the board, uh, in May when we bring that final, um, lease agreement back to you. So what we did to try to give the board some peace of mind with moving forward is we did three different projections for fiscal year 21 in capital outlay. They all assume, um, the same kind of beginning cash balance. The projected option A is revenues remain flat. So that's kind of where we think we're going to be. But option B shows a 10% reduction in revenues and option C shows a 20% reduction in revenues. Should we not get our full state aid? Should there be property tax implications? So we're forecasting all the options related to if revenues stay exactly the way they are, no increases, or a 10 or 20% reduction. You can see the expenditure lines, we would have about, we're, we would estimate for fiscal year 21 around 51, 52 million dollars of spend. That would still leave us a 21, 22 million dollar ending cash balance, which is still healthy for capital outlay. If we go down 10% in revenues, we would adjust our expenditures because we went down, but we are still spending more than we did this fiscal year. And in the final option, which would be kind of the, what we consider a, a more worst-case scenario where revenues are down 20% and we would have to further decrease expenditures, again, we are still then able to expend more than we did in fiscal year 20 and still end the year in 21 with a, a relatively healthy ending cash balance and capital outlay. So this is just to show, no matter what's going on overall with capital outlay, we will be able to make the lease payments related to this particular, um, lease option. It is probably smaller than, um, than our chief information officer would like, um, but there's also a number of opportunities related to that stimulus package and other pieces as we go down the path. There might be additional stimulus packages, um, being released. So there will be other opportunities to look at, at our technology spend and see if we can't enhance it or we make another lease pass at some point. So there's a lot of unknowns. This is why we wanted to start with something we thought we could very easily embed in current expenditures and capital outlay with no issues. So that's kind of the, the history behind that. Um, so again, as kind of a recap of today's presentation, we do have a recommendation on the table to you. Um, we are tell, we are sharing that right now, our, our estimates related to revenues and fixed cost increases remained unchanged from our March, um, presentation. We do know that fiscal year 21 will be impacted by stimulus dollars. It will be impacted by changes to educational and operational needs and we will have to adjust our budget accordingly. Certainly virtual learning programs and technology will play critical roles in that, um, in that budgetary process. Uh, and then strong steps will need to be taken to make sure that both student and staff technology is equitably and allocated across the district and ready to be deployed should needs come up here this fall again. And so we would stand for questions at this point.
Uh, Stan?
Stan Reiser, board member. Um, I'll, I'd like to reserve the, the possibility to ask some big picture questions later, but let me start with the, the small picture questions. The, how long would the lease be for?
So this Susan Willis, Chief Financial Officer, we are looking at no less than three years and possibly a four-year lease because again, we want to make sure in light of some uncertainties that we aren't putting ourselves into a position where, um, we're stretched. So, and but we don't ever wanna exceed the life of the equipment. So we're, we're looking in that three to four-year period.
Stan Reiser, board member. And so that 10.8 million is out of, is that per year, those three years?
No, that's the overall lease. So we'd be looking somewhere between a 2.7 million dollar annual payment to about a 3.5 million dollar annual payment, which is less than we currently allocate for hardware today in capital.
Stan Reiser, board member. And that 10.8 comes out of the capital improvement budget? And does that affect any, uh, school improvements, physical plant programs that we have?
No, uh, certainly capital outlay, it has very specific purposes. So repairs, maintenance, technology, um, it, it's very focused in what it can spend on. It can't be spent on, say, teacher salaries and those type of things. But what we can tell you is we are, we are structuring this particular lease to live within the current allocations we give to, um, technology. So if we had to pull back, we have some room to pull back, but without damaging the, the lease payment structure or what, what Mr. Dixon's trying to do to get us to digital liter- digital literacy.
Stan Reiser, board member. So we're trying to stay within what we already are putting into technology capital program. We're just going to take out, uh, we're gonna lease in order to, uh-
To get the equipment first.
To maximize that budget so that we can start getting some hardware into the classrooms.
Absolutely correct.
Okay. Um, and Stan Reiser, uh-
Yeah, just a second, Ernestine, stand still.
I just had one more question, yes. Uh, what does this do to our training budget? You know, we're gonna, if we're gonna spend 10.8 million or, or lease and, and expand that budget, uh, I'm assuming we're talking about a lot of training that's gonna go along with this too. If I was a teacher, you'd have to start from ground zero. You'd have, probably had to spend hundreds of hours trying to teach me how to do this.
Sure. Rob Dixon, Chief Information Officer. Um, so that even looks different, how we deploy it. Uh, you look at the last, uh, three weeks that we've spent with teachers, we've delivered professional development differently and I don't see that going back the same way. Uh, so there'll be less amount of time consuming information, less, less full days to have that professional development and more just-in-time type of professional development.
Okay. And President Logan- And President Logan, I'll reserve my big-picture questions after everybody else has had a chance to ask some questions.
Okay. Ernestine, you had a question?
I wanted to ask if we find that some of the technology, it needs to be changed in the middle, will that be able to be changed before the end of the lease? Or whatever we start with, in effect, we're stuck with for the four years?
So, Rob Dixon, chief information officer. The rollout of this will take a couple of years to get through. So where you start with one level, you'll have a four-year lifecycle of that device. But then, because the district is so big, it's going to take some time to roll out. So then you're going to come back around to just a natural cycle of rollout and deployment and taking away the old devicesing. And so you're constantly going to be in a supply mode.
Okay. Mike?
Mike Rody, District Five. Is any of this equipment that we're looking at on the lease subject to E-Rate?
Rob Dixon, chief information officer. No, it is not. So category one covers internet and a little bit of voice. There's not much in voice anymore. This is year five. Category two supplies wireless and switching. So E-Rate covers both category one and two. And so that's the infrastructure that supports the devices. And we do an incredible amount of E-Rate filing every year to supply a great wireless infrastructure experience for, including fiber in between buildings. So we lease that fiber in between buildings. That gives the throughput. So all of that is covered under E-Rate.
Another question. Mike Rody, District Five. We're giving not to exceed $30 million. We're going to take a swipe at $10 million. Why wouldn't we take a bigger swipe to begin with and get started? Why wouldn't we go to a $20 million swipe?
So in February, we brought the entire package to the board. It was technology and the capital facilities project. So we're trying to retain enough kind of authority so that we can address the facilities needs here, probably in early fall, late summer. I think we'll be ready to bring something back to the board. So kind of depending on how much that first pass looks like for facilities, we might have another four or five million that we might bring back in a second technology phase. But again, we need to make sure that we are very comfortable, that we can maintain those lease payments without any sort of, where we're going to feel the budget pinch. So I'm being very cautious as we go down this lease path, and that's why we started with something that was well within the current allocation to technology. That will also apply when we get to facilities, to make sure that again, within their current allocations, they can manage the lease payments. If we find that everything is going well and we're very, that's very easily integrated into the budget, and we don't have any other fiscal implications coming out of the pandemic, then we will bring some other options back to you faster.
Let me make sure I'm clear. This is Mike Rody, District Five. We're asking for $30 million, but that could be used district-wide, not just technology. That could be used in different areas that we need to catch up, like facilities. So this isn't just a technology swipe. This is a district-wide, if you will, swipe.
Susan Willis, chief financial officer. This particular resolution we're asking the board today is very specific to technology. So that's the $10.8 million. That $30 million, yes, it was for all capital-type items that would fall under this facilities project plus technology. But the $10.8 today is just technology.
I understand. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Does anyone else have questions on this? I would entertain a motion.
This is Mike Rody, District Five. I move we accept the recommended action.
Ben Blankley, District One. I second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mike and seconded by Ben that we accept the resolution. I'm seeing no other questions. I would ask that we would vote verbally, starting with Stan.
Stan Reeser, District Four. I vote yes.
Mike Rody, District Five. I vote yes.
Cheryl Logan, at large, yes.
Ben Blankley, District One, yes.
Julie?
Julie Hedrick, District Two, yes.
Ernestine?
Ernestine Crable, District Three, yes.
Ron?
Ron Rosales, District Six, yes.
Motion passes seven, zero. Thank you very much, and it'll be wonderful to watch how we move with this. Next item, Mike?
Mike Wollamie. The next item is consent.
Okay. Ben, do you have anything you'd like to pull from the consent item?
Yes, I would like to pull item C19, Zoom video communication. And Rob may want to stick around for that question.
Yeah, Rob, you may want to stay for that. Okay, is that it?
Yep.
Okay, Mike?
Mike Rody, District Five. I have nothing.
Stan?
I was going to pull, Stan Reeser, District Four. I was going to pull the same item as Ben, so none.
Julie?
Julie Hedrick, District Two, nothing to pull.
Ernestine?
Nothing. Ernestine, District Three, nothing to pull.
Ron?
Ron Rosales, District Six, nothing.
And Cheryl Logan, at large, I have nothing to pull. I would entertain a motion for the rest.
Stan Reeser, District Four. I move we adopt the consent agenda except for C19.
Julie Hedrick, District Two, I second the motion.
Okay, it was moved by Stan and seconded by Julie that we accept the rest of the consent agenda. Please cast your votes. Stan?
Stan Reeser, District Four, yes.
Mike Rody, District Five, yes.
Cheryl Logan, at large, yes.
Ben Blankley, District One, yes.
Julie?
Julie Hedrick, District Two, yes.
Ernestine Crable, District Three, yes.
Ron Rosales, District Six, yes.
Okay, the motion passes seven, zero, that we accept the rest of the consent agenda. Item C19, Zoom video communications. Ben?
Okay, so in the packet, in the appendix where it talks about it, and I'd have to flip through it, it basically says that we're not currently using Zoom for classroom-style instruction, that we would plan on using it for outside groups only, interacting with them. So a couple of questions that came up for me. Is the site license still required when the outside groups like NASA and I think there was another
WSU Tech.
WSU Tech, those. Is the site license still required for us when the outside groups have their own site licenses?
Right. Rob Dixon, chief information officer. The difference is when we move to free accounts for our users, then they're limited to an hour. And so I don't want some unexpected consequences of pulling that, even though at this time, I think Zoom is making some efforts, but I'm not comfortable as a chief information officer around everything that they've done so far around privacy and security. So they've still got quite a ways to go from that standpoint. But whenever I look at, I don't want to cause some unexpected hindrances on our teachers and our students that engage with NetPress and some of those other types of activities.
Stan?
I was going to, Stan Reeser, District Four, board member. Rob, in the future, if we decide that we do not need that, is that a possibility? I mean, maybe, I mean, that's a very good answer, that we may run across some situations. But let's say after a year or so, we decide, nothing bad ever did come up with that one-hour limit. Is that something that you would?
Yeah, absolutely. I would say that we could, I probably wouldn't renew at that time. It's so quick, because I think over the course of the last three weeks now, we've had it to where it's been prohibited, just because of all the things that have happened
Right.
and the news around it. So it's too early to tell whether we would, I don't know even this year that we would bring it back, but I also don't want to cause some unexpected consequences to our students.
Thank you.
Cheryl Logan, at large. My question is the $70,000. Because we are in a little bit of limbo with Zoom right now, is this a commitment to licensing that we have to pay the 70, or is this is up to 70,000 as we use it?
It's an obligation to what we renew. So if we decide
So it's a licensing-renew kind of thing?
Right, right.
So we're committed to 70,000, even if we determine we're not going to use it?
Exactly, yes.
Ben Blankley, District One. I guess what relatively, how big of a spend is this for software licensing compared to like other things that we use on a regular basis? Or I guess an infrequent basis?
Yeah, I would say from a remote learning standpoint, this is not a huge license for us. We do licensing for Microsoft and everything else across the board, but that's a whole suite of things. I would say from a remote learning standpoint, this is something that offers a video experience, right? With relatively inexpensive equipment, right? You can hop on with a laptop. If you were to buy that experience in some type of hardware level, you're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars. And so I would say relatively compared to the experience that you get, it's a good experience for an end user that is all software up front and low-cost hardware behind that supports it, if that makes any sense. There's nothing, there's nothing within our environment that we have to have to support it. So it's very much something that we can deploy and pull back as needed. The day we pulled it back, I remember on a Friday afternoon, whenever we did that, we were able to do that within about a half hour. And so that was just pulling the licensing away. And so it wasn't like a solution where we had to go into a school and pull that solution out. It was very much one of, hey, this is privacy and security. We could do that without anyone, because we have access to that single sign-on material.
Julie Hedrick, District Two, I have a question. If it's time for another question now.
Yes, go ahead, Julie.
Yeah, my question is, Rob, if we don't renew this annual license, is there another alternative that will be able to be used for these staff meetings and the WSU Tech communication and any classroom instruction? Will there be, is there some other alternative that we already have that may not be quite as good, but that could be used so that we don't just eliminate these opportunities?
So I'm glad you said that. We use Microsoft Teams. It does allow all the same aspects. One of the nice reasons why we transitioned so easily. So we do use Microsoft Teams, but I can't dictate to an outside vendor that they have to use our platform. Something like NetPress, we've been working with, and so I think there's opportunities there. It's just something that, and if the board would like, and I guess I would ask this of Dr. Thompson, we can look at this licensing, you can hold off on this purchase, and we can look at this licensing to see how we could pare it down if needed.
What effects would that have on us between now and the next time we met if we brought this back into our agenda?
This license would get renewed in the summertime anyway. And so we have it for the rest of the school year, at least for this school year. So we could look at trying to come up with an exploration of what it's being used for currently, and then coming back and just renewing that at a much lower cost, knowing that we would then limit who doesn't have that access to that license. So we could do that if that's
Okay. Dr. Thompson?
That's up to the board to decide that, and that's fine. However, I do want to say that there, even if we decrease the amount of license that we have, we still have to have some, because I know that most meetings that we participate in with the council or of great city schools, with KASB, all of those entities use Zoom. And so if we eliminated and didn't have any Zoom, then we would find ourselves not able to communicate with outside folks. So we do have to have some licenses for our, to be able to function. How many could be determined at a later date? But if you gave us permission to spend up to, we don't necessarily have to spend it all today. We could wait, see what becomes of some things that we hear are happening. Then we can not spend the 70 and spend what is needed for the folks that need to have it to be able to communicate with. So you could either leave it on, you could take it off, but we would not anyway spend more than what we would need to anyway, because we are fiscally responsible. And we would not waste licenses on things that we would not need to be using them for. But what we don't want to do is interrupt services for our kids and for the adults if we don't, if we have a lapse in the time between here and now. He's saying we don't, so we could wait.
Mike?
Mike Rody, District Five. Well, we're beating you up over there. You know, today's news is hard to decipher which is real and which isn't real.
Sure.
And they've been talking about Zoom and has some concerns to me. And one of my concerns is, is that I've heard that there's other government agencies that are banning Zoom. You know, you talk about the council of great city schools, you talk about KASB. You know, it's, if people are banning it because of the problems that they're having, and I'm not going to get into those problems, why should we allow somebody else dictate, you know, they need, you know, maybe they need to change, and we need to go and move further into better technology while we're doing it? You know, that would be my opinion.
Okay. Ben?
I guess, could I propose that we defer this decision until the next regular board meeting in May?
Yes. What we would do is pull this item from the agenda and have it brought back to us at whenever the administration determines is the correct time.
I think that sounds appropriate.
Okay. So is that a motion?
Yes.
Does that require a vote, or can we
Yes, we will have to vote on that.
Okay.
So we need a motion.
I move that we pull this item from the agenda and place it on the next regular board meeting agenda.
Julie Hedrick, second.
Okay, there was a motion to pull this agenda item and bring it back at a later time by Ben, and it was seconded by Julie.
Cheryl?
Yes, Mike?
I want to make sure that we're clear. He's saying that we're going to bring it back next meeting.
Is that when you want it, is the next meeting? Which would be May the fourth?
I think leave it up to administration.
Okay, so we would just pull it and put it on a future agenda, as a future agenda item?
I agree.
Not necessarily tied to a date. Is that clear, Mike? Are you okay with that?
Yes.
All right. And Julie, are you okay with that with your second?
Yes.
All right. We do have a motion on the floor, moved by Ben and seconded by Julie. Ben, what's your?
Ben Blankley, District One, yes.
Cheryl Logan, at large, yes.
Mike Rody, District Five, yes.
Stan Reeser, District Four. I'm going to vote yes with the, just with the understanding that Zoom is probably going to have to stay in our arsenal somewhere, somehow. It may be at a reduced level, but we're probably going to have to keep it in our arsenal at some point. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I vote yes.
Julie?
Julie Hedrick, District Two, yes.
Ernestine?
Ernestine. Ernestine Crable, District Three, yes.
Ron?
Ron Rosales, District Six, yes.
Motion passes seven, zero. Next item, Mike. Thank you, Ron.
The next item is under policy. Proposed revisions to BOE Policy 3302, requirements for issuance and receipt of competitive bids and proposals. BOE Policy 3302 addresses requirements for the issuance and receipt of competitive bids and proposals. It is proposed that the first paragraph of AIP 9 be revised as shown below and as will be stated here with new content that I will describe. Public bid openings and/or proposal closing shall be held in a location established by the purchasing department at the time designated on the request for bid or request for proposal. The new content is during an emerg- The new content is, during an emergency such as a time when the governor of Kansas issues an executive order closing schools and/or limiting the size of public gatherings, bids will not be opened in public, end quote. Recommendation, it is recommended the board approve the proposed revisions to BOE Policy 3302 as provided in Appendix 13.
And that is the only change to this policy, adding that code, that emergency, times of emergency, which we've done to the other policies in order for able, us to be able to continue functioning as a district. And this obviously will go away when the emergency goes away, and we'll go back to the normal policy that we had.
Mike Rody, District Five, I approve, I move we approve the changes.
Stan?
Stan Reeser, second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mike and seconded by Stan that we approve this motion. And just one further thing, this will be a policy that will go into place after this vote. It will not be a two-read policy, and again, because of the emergency state.
Ben Blankley, District One, just to ask a clarifying question. The bids are still public information, and they're posted online, correct? Okay.
They will just not be read.
Just not be read in a public location.
Yeah, there won't be a public, a public, because of limiting 10 people and all those kinds of things.
Okay.
Okay, is there any other comments? Then Stan, what's your vote?
Stan Reeser, District Four, vote yes.
Mike Rody, District Five, yes.
Cheryl Logan, at large, yes.
Ben Blankley, District One, yes.
Julie?
Julie Hedrick, Julie Hedrick, District Two, yes.
Ernestine?
Ernestine Crable, District Three, yes.
Ron?
Ron Rosales, District Six, yes.
Motion passes seven, zero. Next item, Mike.
Under Operations, None Submitted, Miscellaneous Superintendent's Report.
Dr. Thompson?
Yes, since our temporary arrangements don't allow us to celebrate good news at the beginning of our meeting, I thought I would use my superintendent's report time to share some terrific things that are happening in our, at our, for our school district at the local, state, and the national level. First of all, I want to give a shout out to the 27 Wichita Public School seniors who have been named as 2020 Governors Scholars. These students represent the top 1% of high school seniors based on their seven semester GPA. We are highlighting them today on our website and social media channels, and I hope that you will visit our websites to learn more about these outstanding student scholars. Second, I want to acknowledge and celebrate our four Heights High School seniors who were among 57 seniors from across Kansas who have been named 2020 Kansas Career and Technical Scholars. And this program recognizes well-rounded, outstanding CTE students who are finishing their senior year of high school. We have Haley Farren and Mackenzie Gresham, and Kiana Mayhem, and Rain Pankra. All participated in the Early Childhood Development and Services CTE Pathway. And finally, for our third item, I want to salute Shawn Chastain, our Executive Coordinator of Fine Arts and the exemplary music education programs in the Wichita Public Schools. For the fourth time in the last seven years, Wichita Public Schools has received a Best Communities in Music Education Award from the National Association of Music Merchants. This national award recognizes and celebrates schools and districts for their support and commitment to music education and efforts to assure access to music for all students as part of a well-rounded education. This year, we are one of only two Kansas districts to be honored in this manner. There is no doubt that Wichita Public Schools is receiving this honor because of the leadership of Mr. Chastain. He provides an awesome addition to the Wichita Public Schools. And it's no surprise that because of his remarkable service to the arts, not only in our district, but across our community. And Shawn is one of five shockers who will soon be inducted into the Wichita State University College of Fine Arts Hall of Fame Class of 2020. So if you're listening out there, Shawn, we love you and congratulations for all that you, and we appreciate all that you do for the Wichita Public Schools. And since we can't celebrate all these deserving honorees in person, please join me on our social media channels and lend a positive comment or kind words to our news stories to let our superstars out there, our students and our faculty, know that we are applauding them from afar. So with that being said, I end my remarks.
Thank you, next item.
Board of Education Report Request.
Ben?
Well, it's been an interesting time, for sure. All of us have been trying to do our best. I did want to point out, our partners at KSDE, they are partnering with all the public television stations across the state to produce continuous learning opportunities that will be broadcast on our local public television station, KPTS. And so check out KPTS, Channel 8, over the air. There's a schedule online of when those will air, and those are produced at a state level. And then, of course, we've got our own continuous learning that will be aired on our channels and our social media. And so there's plenty of opportunity out there to get your kiddos continue, continue to learning. And we're working on it at home, too. It's a challenge. Speaking as a, you know, as one of the parents that's in the trenches with this, and also having, trying to work remotely from home, it's tough. And it's, it's, it's a challenge, and we understand that. But we thank everybody that's rising to the occasion, and we're gonna make it work somehow, some way, and we're gonna get through this. But the only way we can get through it is working together, and that's what we're doing. So keep it up.
Thank you. Stan?
Stan Reeser, Board Member, I just want to quickly thank the community members, partners that we have that were mentioned today, Credit Union of America, the Food Bank, KWCH, and Ben mentioning Kansas Department of Education, Kansas State Department of Education. I wanted to yield my time to the superintendent again, just for her to be able to quickly state again the lighting situation and the song again tonight.
Yes, tonight, we would like for you to join us on our Facebook channels. And we will meet you there tonight at 8:20. We will be listening to a music video and song called "Rise", written and co-written by our wonderful Northeast Magnet Principal, Matt Kreisman, and Toby Tyner. And it's performed by their band, they have a band at their school called The Griffins. And so you will be seeing all kinds of images. So we've been out across the city taking pictures of images of different things, and that will also be played alongside of this song that was written exclusively for the graduates of 2020 by our staff members, along with the video. But we want you to do that on your porch, or on your deck, with your lights on, whether it's a flashlight, whether you turn your porch light on, whatever it is that you have for light. We want to be able to light up our neighborhoods for all of our 2020 graduates. And again, I will reiterate, this is not the only thing, but this is one thing that we're going to do tonight, and then we'll do again in May, and then we'll do again in in-person graduations at some point in time. So we appreciate you bringing that back up, Mr. Reeser.
Mike?
Mike Rody, District Five, I don't have anything.
Julie?
Julie Hedrick, District Two, I just wanna supplement and comment about things on TV. We can also see Michelle Obama reading to students on there. I think she followed Superintendent Thompson's reading to students, that she began at the beginning of this school year. So catch Michelle Obama reading to students. And then also, I just wanted to mention that because of the stay-at-home order, I was unable to hold my District Two meeting. It was scheduled for last Thursday at Robinson. So I'm gonna be reaching out to those folks that typically attend via email, so. That's my comment.
Okay, thank you. Ernestine?
I just wanted everybody to be aware of how impressive it has taken 150 years to build the school district of Wichita, Kansas. And within weeks, actually within days, we reinvented education because of this emergency. It is so impressive what all the teachers and the staff and the leaders have done. And now it's so impressive what all of those parents are doing. I just ask for, I just, I want to bless them. I just think those parents are now stepping up and reaching out to take care of our kids. I also want to have, Dr. Thompson, would you please say again what time it is that you read to the children? Because I think that that's a wonderful opportunity for us all to be doing the something at the same time.
Yes, the reading actually occurs every other week. There's two different things. You want to get the reading, and they come out on Thursdays at 5:00. So you can go every Thursday at 5:00 to our Facebook page, our Twitter page, and you will see either me reading a wonderful story to students ages four through eight, or you will see a program where we are showing and highlighting specific activities that parents can do as they're moving around their home, or some of them are as you're moving around at the grocery store. But you might not want to take your kid to the grocery store now. But those are all activities that we will be sharing with you to be able to support you. So it's every Thursday at 5:00, there will be something there for families to be able to work with their students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ron?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank all the teachers and administrators for all their work and effort in contacting students and parents. Thank you.
Thanks. And I just want to echo that, our staff has stepped up to the plate. They have, they're going over and above to do things to make sure our kids are still getting an education. And that's, that's just the quality of people that we've employed, and we're so proud of all of you, including you and your team, Dr. Thompson.
We have this together.
Yes, we are. Next item, Mike?
New business?
Ben? Mike? Stan?
Stan Reeser, none.
Julie?
Julie Hedrick, District Two, nothing.
Ernestine?
Ernestine, District Three, nothing.
Ron?
Ron Rosales, District Six, nothing.
Cheryl Logan, at large, nothing. Next item?
Executive session.
And I misstated earlier in my earlier remarks that we had an executive session. We do not have an executive session today. Next item?
Adjournment.
Do I have a...
Ben Blankley, District One, I move we adjourn.
Okay.
Stan Reeser, District Four, second.
I move that, I second that we adjourn.
Okay, we had a fight there, but you won, Ernestine. Ben moved, and Ernestine seconded that we adjourn the meeting. Ben?
Ben Blankley, District One, yes.
Cheryl Logan, at large, yes.
Mike Rody, District Five, yes.
Stan Reeser, District Four, yes.
Ernest, Julie?
Julie Hedrick, District Two, yes.
Ernestine?
Ernestine Crable, District Three, yes.
Ron?
Ron Rosales, District Six, yes.
And I just want to reiterate before we leave is that our next meeting is May the 4th at the School Service Center in the Training Room at 12:00, and it will be broadcast live on our TV channel. So, thank you very much, and we'll see you in a few weeks.